Hi, Bjorn.
Hi, Kate. How you doing? Feeling better? Okay.
Okay, we're good.
We're good.
Good to start.
All right, welcome everybody. I'd like to call the planning meeting together. This is our regular meeting of August 25th, 2022. I'll take a roll call first. Of all the planning commission members, Matt Blackburn, Steve Esposito, Tony Rossi, Fish and Gas. Our solicitor Kate Deerson is on Zoom and is participating. Scott Foley is here, our borough manager. And our secretary, Björn Tala, hello. First order of business is to review the previous meeting minutes. You should have a hard copy laying by your desk. If you want to quick go through that.
I think it was sort of language in the motion to approve the old business of River's Edge.
We have to clean that up. Because it was a motion to approve everything else. I had a chance to find the one that did the meeting minutes. We didn't do that. Okay, because essentially, at that time, permission at the previous meeting, their recognition was wrong. Most of them, most of them.
Right.
And then the rest, and then the rest of the provisions were something.
And there still was clarification language that you're gonna have to add in there where it's highlighted in yellow. Yeah, because I have. I have that Rob Doino handout and I have notes scribbled on it on some of that language. And if you, if you're not sure what some of it was.
We have, because we have some issues with the vote of the council.
Okay. Okay, so you'll add that in and Björn will provide these. Okay, anybody see anything else?
In that error, it should be behind lot 709 and lots 10. Yeah, that's it.
What line is it? Eight, seven. Seven, nine and lot seven, ten. I agree.
Okay, so it's seven, nine and seven, ten, because in the recording, it says lot seven and seven, ten. So is it supposed to be seven through ten? So is it lots seven, eight, nine?
No. Seven, zero, nine, and seven, zero, seven, one, zero, seven, nine, something, ten. Seven hundred and nine and seven hundred and ten.
Got it.
That probably stripped a lot of effort. That was probably my fault. I'm trying to word that in a way that.
No, there were several, like, I think three of you were making the motion at the same time. So the language got a little, like, where it's highlighted for clarification language. It didn't say what that clarification language was. Or I couldn't make it out. It's because I know that several of us were working on it. So, or several of you, sorry.
That's we.
Don't worry about it. That's why we do this.
That's what we discovered. Talking to Tom, we showed the cancels each other out. And we also were using law frequency for it and things we involved, so.
So you'll, you'll be able to go back to the recording to go over what we were trying to say.
They'll use that. We'll use the application for revision made.
Yeah, even. Even line eighty-two, I'm not clear what, item six will be pulled into the second lot. You know, that. That, you know, we were, we probably didn't use proper terminology there for whatever that second lot is. I know I, the item was the number on Ken Doino's letter. And, and each, each modification, but item six and three and four and eleven as well, but I don't know what they meant for that second lot. Things like that, so maybe you can clean that up a bit.
True.
All right, well, with, with corrections, could I get a motion to accept the, the meeting minutes for July twenty-eighth with the corrections that we just discussed?
One second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, me, men's carry with modifications. Moving on to the agenda, do we have any correspondence?
We don't.
Okay, we can jump right down to new business. The only thing I see in front of us is that Edgewater number four, there's an application going for a lot line revision. And the applicant seeking both recommended preliminary and final approval of a lot line revision. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Oh, very good, because we would probably need a little bit more explanation on what, what's going on and why, why you want the lot line revision, so. You, it'd be great if you want to.
You can use the podium.
I use the podium also.
Fair enough. You guys see copies, you guys.
For the record, your name.
My name is Brian Loughlin, address two seventeen Barclays. And I own some paperwork, reference to what is lot C nine R. What I am proposing or asking approval for is moving the current property line roughly point zero zero, nine, eight, is what would the transition be here? Up to my current neighbor's fence, which then would allow me to come straight down here, straight down here, to make it look a little bit more natural. Right now, it's broken up the way that it's structured for some reason. His fence is about four feet short of that line, so we're really talking somewhere between four and six feet wide by forty feet long. Then I'm just gonna fence it in use it for, you know, a side yard for my sixteen-month-old daughter around. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm seeing dimensions on here of ten foot, ten point one eight feet.
That's part of the GPS in Lot two.
Yeah.
Information. I guess they didn't continue it, as you can see on the southern line, where it's eighty-four degrees, fifty, it's fifty seconds.
Yeah.
But the northern one, I guess they didn't want to run it further out. So that's, that's not really tend to be, that would be the exact same dimension as this. Forty-one thirty degree is the same as this. Ten point one eight. The property line is here. New property line is here against his fence line here. This landowner, he has a gate right here, and so I wanted to allow for him to stay on his own property to access. He didn't want to close him off on that.
So that was my next question. That was that little rectangle there.
Yeah, so that gives him a walk away from his front door to his own gate, through his own yards. There's no trespassing or anything like that.
Is the neighbor presumably okay with this?
Hundred percent okay. He doesn't use it. He stays, this dog and his family inside his own fence and yard, and so on approval are ready to do a sale.
Yeah, I think he'll want some money or something.
Yeah, okay.
Well, as long as he, you know, approved, obviously, there will be some kind of a subdivision or application made.
Well, this is.
The other guys sign off or?
They both have to sign a book, property, or they're gonna find the plat.
Okay.
So, but if anything, we're doing as well. This is received, review of county economic development, and the planning commission. Their conscious side, and you see their packet was some more descriptions in the table. K U resources found on the table, using the real red water plan incorporated into the site. Let us resolve our review of land, see if you package it, found building up a, have any consequences for it. So if anything, recorded, flat, we're execution after council approves it at their regular meeting in the third week of September.
Any members have a question or comments?
If that's be on the property one, or you're on the property one.
In borough, the general, yes. And this is all for what happens? Their comments, their comments.
The common edge water, anything under sixty is allowed.
And must be ornamental.
Correct, match the design code. And the, the piece that gets, the piece that isn't getting carved off stays with the yard right here. It stays with the.
This is correct.
I don't.
I don't have any issues with that. Well, then I, I would entertain a motion to accept this lot line revision for this property. I guess we would define it as lot C nine R. Obtaining additional property from the owner of lot C A R. Would somebody make a motion to that effect? We accept, and we can go straight to preliminary and final approval.
Yeah, I'll make that motion that we that we accept the proposal, the expansion of lot C nine R, is the acquisition of a portion of lot C A R as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good to go. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
All right.
As for the paperwork, side of things and the signatures, we'll come, him and I will come back up here. We can sign off for it to be signed and show the rest of your.
Council, council of the two meeting session. First of all, review some work section, some of this format. Which will be the first Tuesday in the month. I tend that one. I think it's September second, eight. And then the third Monday of the month when they'll take action on it, you would not even be present for that.
Okay.
All the, all the back and forth questions in the current work session. First two days of that one, first Tuesday, September, if I'm out of town for work. You can.
I'll shoot you an email, send me the information. Appreciate it.
You want me to spare?
My P D I need.
Yeah.
I made it for, I made it for work. There's no change. I only use for the.
I have a secret inside, so I'll keep mine. Okay, move right along, then we can go to old business. The only old business I have, unless there's something Miss Lady is, we should talk about first. Because this is more of a discussion, but and I'm glad Christian's here this time, because you, you were instrumental in getting this thing off the ground started by sending us all those references and things like that, so. We had a pretty productive discussion last month on the parking, revisiting the existing parking regulations. And I think we are starting to lean towards thinking, are we too restrictive requiring all this off-street parking in areas where there's plenty of on-street parking already? So I summarized some of our discussions and sent it to Christian, so he was sort of up to speed. I don't know if I sent everybody that, my summary.
I think you did, because you put, and then you had a little dialogue.
Yeah, okay, okay. I couldn't remember if I sent it around or just to Christian.
Yeah.
But basically, I wanted her to know that we are, we're thinking about this and looking into it. And to see if she had any feedback or input on, why did she even bring this up in person, you know, stuff like that. So the only thing, and the more I was thinking about it, some of my recommendations, first, these are just personal recommendations, not the groups. But I was, I was thinking, we don't take very good use of Allagani Avenue. And people don't even really know, a lot of their tenants didn't know you could park the entire lane that you have on both sides. Except right by Walgreens, the Old River. And I had felt that that was signed better and had painted lines to parking spots. That would, that would turn a lot of people down. Words up there. Now, Scott, a lot of the, we go. That's a state road. I don't know if we're allowed to pay parking lot lines on both sides of it or not. We'd have to, we'd have to talk about that.
We talked to municipal services about that. See the reaction to it.
Okay. So that's legal parking.
Agreed, and they don't mark that, so identify with destiny installed.
It was a major tourist reception.
But just lines on the ground would all of a sudden clue people into to do it. And a lot of this came from the guy that wanted to build that fitness spot in the old Oakmont Baker. What was that name, that company?
Joe.
Joe. Joe Madd, person, yeah. And when you think back, he was giving us like three parking spots, on-street park, on off-street parking, like, and we were losing six or seven or something like that. And, and he ended up getting turned down by this community board. When right across the street, this all of a sudden used parking spots, finally get evidence.
There's that consideration, inspiration, if there's something in the.
Yeah. Right, right, and that, that's what we gained from your references, too, that you couldn't even build a town like Oakmont again if you hadn't followed all the ordinance, it's the off-street parking. So, so then I started bringing up some ideas like that Kate has shot down a little bit about showing discretion on who gets, who needs off-street and who doesn't. But I mean, if you codify it somehow, like if, if the business, the proposed business was on Allagani Avenue, maybe they, they relaxed restriction, or, you know, maybe our restrictions don't need to be controlled. Or do we need, do we really need off-street parking restrictions on, in certain areas of the borough? Or could we just do away with them? We play, or, or do we, we follow the idea of, like, if there's available parking within, on-street parking within some number, two hundred feet, then they don't need to provide off-street or something.
So you're describing spectrum of options, right?
Yeah.
We work the existing ordinance, the ratios, to just find something that maybe is a little more accommodating to kinds of parcels we have in the borough. Versus something that's more leaning towards like apartment management plan strategy, or looking at shared lots and timing and oftentimes they're factoring pay, pay space and then moving space. So versus giving, just wiping that completely. So those references I gave, and let's, you see that all over the place.
Right.
I don't know what council's appetite is for stuff. I don't know, should we come up with a few options? I mean, I know. I was in charge.
One of the other things we discussed is whether or not the requirement should apply to new buildings, specific square footage. Right. There's a, there's a, you know, if you want to build a twenty thousand square foot building, probably parking, if you want to add a five thousand square foot building. A two thousand square foot building, if you want to change use.
Yeah.
Of a building, right, I mean, you know, the concept that you're gonna take a gym and deny their, their ability to, you know, change the flow and layout of parking from the former use to be all at once. On the strap that generated, I mean, it's so hard to find.
Yeah.
So I think if you're looking at use, or if you're looking at the addition of square footage, right, like, that's a good metric, it's a measurable metric. You can say, okay, if you're only gonna add a thousand square feet, there's ample off-street parking, identify areas of the town with ample off-street parking. You know, why are we, why are we taking this stance that's, you know, decidedly not for a business, right? I mean, we talk about how the borough is, it's sometimes a borough that's for a business, for a small business. Well, if you tell a small business, hey, you can't come here unless you can create off-street parking, you know. It's not.
Right, okay.
So there was one. Some of it's time to your suggestion, but yes, looking at setting a minimum above which is triggered, but below that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just apply. I don't see this burden of that. Do you like this? We can look at that as a starting point. Anyway, I keep getting back to, there's, there's something small on that parcel in the borough, right? And whatever triggers that zoning, you you need.
Yeah.
For Christians, too, the other thing we discussed last time was that, just that, right, like, the inventory of development will land in borough so miniscule that you're really just punishing a very small subset of people that might do something that makes the town better.
Yeah.
Right, it's not like you can go throw up four applicants on Allagani Avenue. Right, so it's, you know, it's, it's, we're, we're taking a very you know, hawkish stance on something that's it's not, it's very small percentage of lots in borough, they even.
Well, you can get those out. If, if the block development then doesn't have a parking that it has, it'd be disastrous.
True. But, but, you know, how many square? But how many square feet is that building, Steve? But what's the ground floor of that building, right? It's gotta be at least.
Yeah, but it tells me it's in the code. Just my point is, living down there, where would these people be, they'd be parking all over that neighborhood, which I guess is okay, maybe that's the point. Maybe walking from down by the clubhouse of River's Edge to go to there on, you know, on the.
Or they could park on Allagani Avenue. They wouldn't have to walk out on there.
I don't know if somebody parking there's a. Presumably, though, if you have that lot, you would have a small restaurant.
Or.
Or maybe. Yeah, but there's no, I mean, restaurants are very, they're very sensitive. There's nowhere, I mean, most people don't want to walk, most people don't want to walk. What's, you're making, you're making my point. Yeah, but I'm saying, if, if, but if there was, I mean, people are going, they're, they can, they park right there, they're the restaurant. If they have to walk eight blocks, I'm not sure that restaurants. We knew that if we had no minimum parking requirement, a lot wouldn't. But then, then let's use. There'll probably be another building on the other side of that parking lot. With maybe another restaurant, or Starbucks or something.
Well, maybe, maybe we use this a lot, maybe we use the lot as an example of what's the size, right? It's important to, when talking about the range, the orchestration, it doesn't reveal many. If the owner in the lot sees that he needs all his customers are gonna drive it.
They're kind of. I'm, I'm, like, I am not all in favor of what happened to that gym. According to me, how did, how did the gentleman that was renovating, what's, what's that called, the Oakmont Hotel? That's next to that's on, there's a, there's a, oh, three, three, three years, yeah. How did he get a permit to renovate that building before the pandemic? Where he's making a substantial renovation. And there's no parking spots there.
The purr, the purr review was just to get it back to way of ones, not to change anything. There's pandemic hit is when they were modifying their plans, and the same architect who is a representative of New York or Bay Harbor and Turtur, we have location is also now front on board to do a land development application. They just haven't done it yet. They've stopped everything in the project.
Well, yeah, I know, but I was curious how they got the permit back then to do what they were doing. When it seems like the code requires that type of instance, that they need parking.
There's argument in case that you should never abandon the building, wasn't left used as long as it's in the restaurants. As long as the footprint is gonna say the same. But as we saw things progressing, and more I talked to the architect.
We identified parking space, so.
There's like, or something in fact, with most of it. Not much, not very much. I remember bought the lot and that was the building of any one, I remember that was, you know, with, as a P R D. You can play by your own set of rules. And essentially what that was, you know, the lot setbacks, housing design, lot sizes. And the shared parking concept, that was all part of that whole project itself, so. They knew that that anchor building, the anchor that building was gonna be a restaurant, whether it's be the lot or an apple, be anything else, so. The G F A never changed, so restaurants are restaurants and restaurants. That was all part of the calculations for the off-street stuff. I agree, if they came stood alone and put a if they found a piece of vacant land somewhere else in the borough, there'd be a discussion, a healthy discussion about on-street and off-street parking, the ratios required and stuff like that. Get another minute, we'll go out here.
I find it interesting that there are cities that have completely eliminated minimum parking requirements.
Yeah, me too.
Got fascinated.
So if anybody done any kind of back and envelope calculations on our, using our ratios and just to figure out what we actually end up with with some of these, I mean, it's usually like a one-to-one parking, the building footprint ratio almost across the board.
Once, one is everyone, the one.
Like, if you've got this much building, square footage, you almost got the equal amount of parking square footage for most retail.
Two thousand square foot building to buy two thousand square foot parking.
Yeah, once you factor in access and all the other things, it's, I mean, it's something like that. That's it, that's it. Yeah. If it's gone off by like fifty percent, it's still, it's a massive change in the spatial allocation of land, you know, in the borough. It's, it looks like armor, it looks like.
Yeah, how much it becomes just paved parking.
Just, just paved parking.
Whether there's cars in them or not, yeah.
Well, and one of the other things, too, that then we have to get back to, the root of, right, is, you know, one, is there a parking problem? And if there's not, if there's not a parking problem, then rather than making the parking requirement so prohibitive that you can't, you pro development in some capacity, maybe there's some, some revision needs to be made to recognize the fact that there is not a parking problem and that the modification of the requirement in order to facilitate growth and the, the, you know, better use of whatever land is left. It's not much. Becomes more feasible. Right. Steve's point is well made, right, parking support. It's, it's fundamentally important to any business or real estate developer. Parking. But, you know, is the availability of public parking along Allagani Avenue or other areas that we're focusing on ample to support the addition of two to ten more businesses? Of course, it depends on what the businesses are, right, but, you know, is, you know, are the existing parking environments so punitive that they're solving a problem that doesn't actually exist? Right, now, you could, you could find a hundred people out the door and block by block, they would tell you the answers to why there's a parking problem or why there isn't a parking problem in their particular corner in the borough, because everyone hasn't. Right, but if you, if you, that's what you study, but on a fundamental level, is there a parking problem? If the answer's no, and then the current parking requirements are overly onerous, then all we're doing is taking a, you know, a, a crowbar, a anti-broads, right?
Well, I one of my things I wanted to do for my homework last time was talk to the chairman of Congress, people, things like that. Do they, do they hear complaints from business owners? Is there a parking problem? And where is it? No, where, where are we? Even if there is one, I don't know if there is. Nancy Ryan, Nancy Ryan is only able to really point to one area.
Can you speak rhetorically?
Yeah.
The the, the discussions that we hear from the full award business owners, we've addressed in certain ways. First of all, we went from two-hour parking, we increased to three-hour parking limits. Prior to that, it's not, no limits. What we're seeing now, and I I'm not gonna speak for the chairman, but I believe they're trying to remind the business owners that the employees really shouldn't not be parking in front of their own building, and they are. And then they call you a tag, they get tagged, they yell that.
And then they call you a tag, they get tagged and yell that, well, it's, the parking on the corridor is essentially one large mall parking lot for all your Allagana Boulevard. You can do a lot of damage in three hours of parking after shopping and stuff. So the encouragement is, there's no permit parking behind, off the beaten path, there's no meter parking. So to have employees who do come to work, have them park out a couple of blocks off the street. Um, that's the main thrust of the yarders to give them chamber.
Yeah.
Is that the employees of other business, and well, it's not my employees, it's yours. Your employees are bothering, oh my, 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 oh wait, but your employees are bothering. So it's all down the boulevard. Nancy's comment was even as simple as during, you know, the eighth of five business day, when some of these employees are parking on Allagana. Yes. Right? Because the businesses that are on Allagana Avenue are, uh, you know, maybe their parking use occurs at a different time of day. It was a restaurant or whatever, case may be. So, you know, well, that's, that's a, everyone's gonna have to solve that problem, that scenario, but like, it could be as simple as, you know, getting chambers as their employees, they're gonna park for eight hours a day. Don't park on Boulevard in front of, you know, the retail businesses, you know, park, park on what, um, yeah, where there's more empty parking. You know, a much lower usage rate for traditional business. The other case point was, a lot of that parking is currently in that block of Allagana Boulevard, where you've got two-story retail and offices above it, right? You have a lot of office users, you know, especially insurance agents, law firm, you know, whoever it is.
We were everywhere in Washington.
Yeah.
Right, real problem.
You've got a very bad two-story office.
Yeah, professional. Yeah, you're right, exactly. Um, and it, and I, I've looked at that since the last meeting, and I, there's always parking spots up there. Even during the, um, the stop-street parade, I think, you know, I thought, oh, I'll still clear, and it was always the block parking. Apparently, if employees are parking there eight hours a day, I could see how there would be very few spots up there.
And it happens, it happens every day, but we, we, you see the tickets in the past coming.
So the, if we could get them to park on Allagana Avenue, we'd need to change the signage on Allagana Avenue. It only has two hour, two hour limit. It, it needs to be.
Why have anyone?
There needs to be holistic approach on Allagana Avenue, first of all, and we include that. And we need to find a better line strike, and we can, we can pay that lines book out. Um, and then the paradigm shift of people who visit Oakland actually can park on the street because while it appears to be a major thoroughfare, and by vehicle counts it is, it doesn't track thirty miles an hour if you're lucky on a good day. So it's, it's no slower, it's no faster down below than designing a boulevard.
Oh, it's, it's sure.
Well, no, there's still, they have, we have many, we have many. We have as many mid-crossing intersect, mid-crossing crosswalks and not a little. But it's, I mean, okay, but then you call them, us prior, but the stop signs are the same. People out there cruising slow because they know they're in Florida or somewhere. But the whole culture, that whole ball where they, where they slow down below, if you started, he's saying, you can park down here too, across the street.
Well, most of us believe in that assumption, you could only park on the western side, one, the one side, along this, that whole side along the train tracks, I can make parking. And if you can't, the sign says, the whole way down, you park there, two hours. So there shouldn't be anyone parked, so that all these hours, that's what you want to play.
The paradigm shift needs to be that we can park on there, we have to, we have to properly sign it, you want to strike and all that stuff.
And, and just block rights, there's like five-way block up Allagana River. It's not like you can't get back up.
I would say the owner's part of it, as the zone ownership of the borough is, no matter what business I look at, okay, which are parking relationships? And I'm sorry, I can't use what's on the streets to count towards that fact.
Yeah.
And it says it right in the, you know, we had the same discussion with Starbucks, which is looking at their second part, second account in the borough. It's, you know, the ratio of parking permits, I, and I include it, it's on the streets. And you sit there and you get a face I'm getting right now, it's like, really? So, you know, maybe we, we do tweaks and amendments like Ron does, like the city of Pittsburgh does, and Kate Scher mentioned. But maybe it's also some editing and redacting with some lighting in the current code itself. And say, you can count parking as long as it's within two hundred and fifty feet of you.
Yeah.
That type of thing.
Yes, or location, if you live in a building like this, go back to, it's not Allagana Avenue. There's unbelievable lots of parking there that he was.
Yeah. Well, there will be that borough lot.
Well, no, there is, that, that parking lot.
See your way.
See your way, it's, that's a lot of. I checked that today. I mean, how much more parking do you need?
How many were there? Did we tell?
Well, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I know what you mean.
I mean, that was.
If you look down in the average, there's not a lot of vacant and left, it's gonna be slightly developed. And, and if any, anything that's gonna happen, it might happen here at the Tom Nelly Pizza Place, and this other piece of land right here between United River and Key Bank, that's your only gold stretch, bacon stretch of land for, for new development. I mean, everything else has parking, everything else is existing development. That will be a future of this parking lot.
Well, I think Chris was trying to say, you can't tear down a building in Oakmont and then put up a new, a new.
I don't use.
Because you'll never be able to park.
Yeah. The other side of that is, the only way you could do this is if you don't scale. Find a tunnel box, walk, consolidate it, then you can.
Like you could provide off-street, by tearing down, we'd be able to build another.
Yeah. And those are the high-impact projects that we got, right?
Yeah.
The, the probability that a site-assembled, tear-down redevelopment is financially feasible, virtually, virtually not, given today's construction costs, uh, what it would cost you to assemble the land in and of itself, what the rents, the available rents are for a development upfront, to acquire occupied land, scrape perfectly good buildings, and then go vertical on a new development. The feasibility, I mean, I would challenge anyone who show me how it's feasible, virtually impossible. This is, this is planning commission, those we gotta think twenty, thirty years from now.
Yeah.
Right? Because that's, that's staying power of somebody's organization.
It will be problematic, so I can't imagine those. That's what Christian is, three, 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 whatever it is, there's, there's no way they're allowed parking. Why would they come, couldn't take from that building now, right?
It's less than ten years old, too.
Yeah. So they're, they're. You can probably build it when it's like that.
There you go, three, 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 right there. Brown Loll's. It's a leaves two.
My book was set, hasn't been changing class since.
Versatile, jerk.
That lot's usually full, too.
Yeah, that lot's always.
Yeah, that lot's pretty full.
You get a lot of the parking along the back there, you can't see, but there's, there's headed parking right over here. You know, every square foot of that property is asphalt, it's not building.
Can people park in here in that neighborhood?
Yeah. And then this is the other part of that right there, I mean, the jam-up you see is between three, two, three building, and the next building down with Farmburg is located somewhere in the Chalies, is other Mecca of, and you can just see this photograph right here. They use parking on every little bit of asphalt that you can locate.
It's there.
Yeah.
Sure. But the only time you see parking on Allagana Avenue was when Farmburg is really busy. You know, certainly, yeah, certainly. Otherwise, it's so empty, you think you're not allowed to park there.
Yeah. You know, nobody wants to be the first person, right? I, I never knew you could park.
Yeah, that's why the lines would be, would help out quite a bit there. Yeah.
But I mean, I think there's a real appetite, at least amongst us, to, to adjust this in such a way that it's just more precise.
Yeah.
But, but I guess a lot of this comes down to whether Pendo up the bus, straight. I, I think there's two issues, one is about where people see there's parking available, the other is the small-scale.
Yes.
One, just one of those.
We need to raise the language, I think we need to, obviously, case in point, we have to turn this into this discussion, this is something we need to buy from. Get your view by planning. It's for a discussion offline. And our, our goal is, I guess, sort of what Brad was thinking about, I mean, there's, Allagana Avenue is a separate conversation, that's, that's initiative, but, but Pendo, see if they go for it. But if we look at the actual language, we're gonna say this is a ratio, something for the small, of the existing building. Well, there's not even a ratio requirement for residential, there's also homes that, they, they don't have a street park, they should park on, they don't park.
I know. Representatives that on the. Just want one space for better, they came to us, they wanted to use the older. Uh, they showed us something in the back when they first proposed it.
Yeah, yeah, so we thought one, one part was enough, right? One of the bedrooms, so it was.
My question was, we can see how to do a whole thing, or just. This, these, so, there's honestly no, there are, there are arguments about the back lane, you know, fifth inch, you don't have a parking. It's, it's the two main hall doors, and maybe back the fourth street, but again, it's revenue, it's empty rooms. Parking is free as a gosh, and if you just don't park on the street, so. The pressure you feel is the current form of work, more so than you feel with residential. I'll be frank with you, it's, you know, there's, we, we are short, we are quick, it's one of those parties for residences. This one. It's that downtown toward the borough. When you have a small, a small business, I think it was committed and say, you're gonna park. Because for Virginia streets, here, the whole thing, you can look at the borough, there's really no parking built, sure. Right? And, and we are starting to see some turnover down there, and we're gonna see some turnover, um, the tenant is gonna move from Farmburg's building to there, and be nothing but take on, who, oh, they need parking, oh.
That, that's the only blocks that I saw that have a park, the closer you get to Holden, the harder it is to find parking.
Exactly true.
And then it's not easy to turn around, you saw it on the, then you can't turn around in the back.
Then if you turn now.
Yeah, so, that, that block's the only place I've ever thought, looked like had an issue, that, that last block or two. And the lines, designated parking spot, and Pennsylvania, so there are no lines all the way to Holden Red.
You are absolutely correct.
Same, same with that, I was talking about Allagana Avenue, there's no line once you go past the eight hardware, all the way to Holden Red. So, but people figured out, they use every conceivable spot all the way now.
I mean, let's just take this block from Virginia Avenue to Point, Portu, excluding, excluding anymore. Restaurant, a new, uh, Oakmont Tavern, two restaurants in this whole block, and they literally have no off-street parking.
Yeah. And somehow they manage.
You know what, that's an open tavern, isn't there something in the back of it?
Right here.
Isn't there some parking that up there?
Yeah, it's like a. I don't think anybody knows.
No, I don't think so either.
And most of the, those spaces are taken up because there's residences back on the second floor.
Yeah.
Because of the elevation of Virginia, that allows you to go parking back to the building.
The other thing is, we've all leaned at those residents. I've never, I've still never had, I, I look like, I, I still, hey, I'll drive her at once. Like, I've never really struck.
Block, block, block.
I'm not, I'm not walking like ten street to get down there.
That's, that's.
I've never had an issue. Yeah. I've never, I've never had issues with the tavern or my place or any of those places, I just, now you know you can park.
Well, there's the.
Where does it stop?
Right, right there, Miller, Miller's Auto, see those?
Okay.
Right, that grassy area next to Miller's is where, after, after that is PNC Bank and Walgreens, you can't park, that close to Holden Red. But it starts right there by that grass.
Yeah, I mean, it would not even occur to me.
And, and there, there is, that, that doesn't have the best walkway up to Michael Hayes Restaurant, but you can get up there. There's an angle thing up there.
Are you gonna go up the stairs?
Yeah, yeah, you can get up. If, if people would park that on, on Allagana Avenue. The only, the only thing in the back, why I keep thinking, um, if we did away with off-street parking completely, and then some new development came in, we don't want them to not be successful, but, you know, what if they came in and people wouldn't want that bar, won't go to there because they don't have parking? And they're just gonna go out there, it's too, we, we want businesses that move here to be successful, too, so. I, I don't know, that, to both of their arguments is, we, there's one, they can use a property in the borough on that. That's the one. It's right next, it's a block up in the cubic, so there's one version of these problems, you have a lot of. Part two, one next to PNC Bank, that's another one.
Right, and green grass, I just.
Everything else is pieces of products, this is developed, and no one ever approaches and say, yeah, I'm not, I think. Hasn't happened.
Well, what about, okay, you got the Ace Parking Lot, the big, the big Ace Parking Lot by the library, the big end of the park.
They, that's there, but he's never approached, you know, by the hills, and that's, that concept, sorry, but that would be developed.
Yeah.
Need parking.
Yeah.
But he would use, he would, you share parking if you own the whole lot, the whole, you know.
Yeah, when you look at the struggle he had, just trying to clear any of that Starbucks.
Well, I know, he was a need-all, parking would be the need, these, these developments, they very graciously allowed the library to use it to coast.
Yeah.
Right? Way more than a park.
What if, uh, we were worried about the guy that was cleaning out the building where the west door used to be? But he was, whoever owns, let's say, again, was thinking about potentially redeveloping. That's, to your point, if they could just build that entire problem with, I don't know if it'd be commercial or residential, but with no parking, with no minimum parking requirements, that would kind of jam up that shoot down there, that's a, that's a big piece of.
It's a big reason property, it wasn't just lucky where he, all, all of this is.
Yeah.
A vacated lot.
Yep.
That's owned by, um, it's called Sped Incorporated, which is another type of RBC entity. I, I can't find the word, but they had property in Mike's, when I used to work out of body, I just recognized the name when I saw it.
Yeah.
But this is, this is a blessing word, but a lot of these places, you know, this, these buildings all use this parking back in here.
Do they?
Yeah, they eventually, it goes back to there, yes, if I, if I open up the county map, you'd see this, this parcel attaches to these buildings. Because we have made the inquiry ourselves internally, that would, we maybe see if we can find that second, create a subdivision parcel, I'll make a building, but that leaves that, that leaves this with no parking whatsoever.
I guess the point, with that little lot with all that square footage, there's never a donation.
No.
There wasn't an issue down there running, it was all locked in, right? The height, we see.
And a lot of people, a lot of places too, also do this.
Depends what the use was.
You can't see it here, but this is the nursing home that closed down in Oakmont.
Right.
So, well, the lot literally goes from Ann Street to Rollo Railroad tracks, that's the size of the park, so along the alley, that pays off. This is their parking here. So any entity that takes this one building here, but we, we drove around the borough, we should care down even the borough. That would enhance the whole, but I said, okay, where would you park? Well, our building would be small, obviously, but, but, but our parking would be here, I mean, that, that, this parking here is for the nursing home. I mean, look at this, look at this building right here.
That wasn't the calm plan, to move, move the.
It's not a very operation down the Ann Street.
Yes.
And that's so efficient, you do that, and that is, and that would be actually, it'd be more, we'd turn on and start over again. But this is that building across the street, that multi-tenant flex space that has everything, a little bit of everything in it.
Yeah, these separate granite plates.
Yeah, right there, and again, never see the apartment person there. Yeah, right there, again, never see the parking version there.
Never.
Nope, nope.
So, anybody remember when the ordinance has changed, and why the ratios have changed between twenty twelve and now?
Why don't they, they were changed, we might have just used the same word, it's same ratio.
The residential, the, the, this was changed.
Yeah.
As, as a counter, we, we, we were. Should we just, should we look at specifically what city, what's the impression?
Some road right outside of Salem, yeah. Um, Mont Levin is.
Mont Levin is, well, it's, it's.
They have variety of parking aspects, they have a main corridor with a multi-story. All of the parking relations, and then they have this little quaint corner, this full nook of Oakmont, excuse me, all of them where the original Asian started. The, the first, first one, back there, there's this common area, Route nineteen, they're completely, they're just full headed parking. On both sides.
And that sort of seems to work similar to the way.
Uh, I know Swiftly is based on, you know, talking to colleagues who used to work there, their parking ratios, they, you can't find parking, Swiftly.
And they're made.
I think Door Monster would start the eleven, sorry, I like to see if it's for, I don't know if they do it for different parts of the city. Um, I would focus on, this, if I were to, I'd look at designing the launch of the next several ones. Because that neighborhood hasn't changed since I was a kid, but it's had this new mall, some new development, and. Footprint hasn't changed much whatsoever.
Yeah, that's a fair point.
Now, and a lot of those places even have, uh, permanent parking in the neighborhood, but once again, we don't have that, we have plenty of.
Different, that's a horse with a different calorie, you have people using ride shares, walking, the bus access. It's, it's. That's a good comparison to the language.
Yeah.
Maybe they're ratio.
These places like Highland Park, there's restaurants, kind of all the beach path, um, high place, now, and then they're, they're very much. Yeah, they're, they're very much interwoven with the neighborhood, and I, I don't go there a lot, but when I do, I, I. That's a, very, that's as dense as, more dense than Oakmont.
Shady side school as well. And again, city, this person, it's a, it's a long. Well, let's look, let's look outside of this, see a very. Other communities outside of the city, of, what if I say, uh, this, this, we know, since they have ratio requirements, the ratios and stuff. We can think of town, we, we have the ability to go online, code sections, all of them.
That, you know, like, it's, it's like, eventually. You know, little downtowns, I think of like Grove City, places like that, that are, you know, they're little main streets. You, you know, it's the same thing, it's, there's two spots in front of every little building.
It might be the same thing that they have, topped it, if the ratio tends locked in.
Might be, yeah.
I'm pretty sure the State College and Slippery Rock, any Grove City. It's that law of. Okay, so I guess we, we'll, we'll start dating some orderings, like, in other places.
Yeah.
We'll go, and you will, we'll try to follow certain areas and say where it's from. So, and we'll look for language, I think, again, look for our, my language, to look at the language of the season or psyche. You can't actually park these part of your parkerations for the borough. Go from there.
Can you think of any other samples like that? You know, not happening, it's a result of.
Yeah, yeah, um, there was a, a craft brewery that tried to move in, in that, that green field next to Miller's Auto, I say, and like. There was a lighting store there, they wanted to refurbish it, go to Craft Brewery that served food. As soon as they went to serve food, they couldn't meet the off-street park.
Well, man, that would have been terrible for the neighborhood, can you imagine?
And other you're already. Swear, swear to God, this wasn't very long ago, that none of you were on, on playing again, and I was, and I couldn't leave. If, if your practice, that's all, didn't want to have a brewery, I grew the craft brewery, not a real brewery, it was gonna.
You drive down the stretch, you're like, yeah, everyone's fine, there's cars everywhere.
Oh, yeah. Do you still have your number, Jamie, we can give.
It's funny, I actually knew, knew the people, they, they knew who they were, they lived in Murray'sville. The guy made a lot of money selling cars and bargains, his daughter was gonna come in here and build a craft brewery, and she wanted to have. Thirteen chairs, bar stools and three tables, so, but somehow we went to the ratio, and they needed. So many parking spots that they couldn't, couldn't get one in that little skinny lot. Yes, I, I felt terrible.
Yeah.
We were all, we were all in great time, same for you, yes, we have zero.
And every time we go over there, they're, they're packed, and I, again, there's always a place to park, yeah. Maybe you drive around the block more than time.
We had that Allagany Avenue, Thomas parking, yeah, they, they could have made, they only needed fifteen spots. And they couldn't, so that was. This Joe Matt, this Joe Matt, there was one other, I think. Like the Starbucks, their problem is the drive through.
Yeah.
That was, it was stacking, remember they wanted, it was chewy.
Without the drive through, it would have been.
Yeah, they, they wanted to have a drive through, and they felt, I don't know, they thought they were gonna get so much business because of Fulton Road. They thought people were gonna get up, that's when the term I could. They, they were unrealistic.
Yes. Yeah.
And they couldn't hit it on that lot. But that, we didn't turn them down, they just never came back.
No, yeah, they never came back, they just couldn't, they couldn't get that.
But on the other hand, on the other hand, um, mattress where. That, that one there was, was the opposite, um. You know, Chipotle and Starbucks both wanted to share that lot. And have drive-throughs and things, and they, they couldn't make that either. So we, they would have never been able to park, and be, and so we ended up with a, a business in it. Provide all the parking, we can base on smart footage, and now they're already on the park.
I saw two cars parked in it, holy cow.
That, that's where our ordinance is shot, I say, again.
Yeah, the mattress warehouse, we, we should have been able to get better use of that.
Not that it gets back, you know, I mean, that, that's a key corner, but.
Yep.
So. It's a good thought, and it's warehouse, here's.
Yeah. So, in a restaurant. Triggers are reviewed, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Well, depends on the side of the restaurant.
That's, because that's.
Great showable.
Yeah, right, it's very generic.
Okay, I'll work with. One thing we did want to look at is totally take you about, buildings under certain square foot, we wanted to figure out, you heard of that? Okay, well, this has been an interesting discussion, we're all over the place, but we're starting to zeroing on.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we're all kind of thinking about this with the same end in mind, which is to make this town. More accessible to businesses that want to be here and serve its community, and I think there's different ways to do it, but I think for the most part, we're all kind of. Zeroed in, we've obviously got some missed opportunities, and I would like to see us have lessons.
Shaq, I'm still working with some things.
Okay. No, there's definitely.
No.
No.
Yeah.
That reminds me, did you, did you guys, did you guys see this Oakmont thing? A couple of interesting things in here, um. The, the council's issuing a letter of support for the Oakmont Foundation, that parking lot project as drawn. And they're offering financial support if needed, they, any necessary sidewalk on long advanced way. And to rename the dance way from Monaco upon completion product.
This is like yesterday.
I don't remember either.
That's where the chair goes.
Oh, it's, it's next month, sorry. And it's one of the things, they all, they make sure we all.
They're always put out a month ahead, like magazines are.
Oh, yeah, we did write a letter of support, okay, yeah, we sort of, yeah. That, that letter.
Like four months ago. That's, that's, that's as drawn.
As drawn, the way it's drawn, not as composed after it was drawn. There's a long discussion about right-of-way movements, or what happens when they get it right of way, if you don't vacate it right of way.
Is that, I think it's not gonna be a vacation, or is, or?
Still, it's, it's still discussion.
Yeah, it sounds like, I, I think they need to pay the sidewalk along that, between the building and the vacated part.
I can tell you that, against the building, the right way goes to there, there's a proposal to move it, the borough's saying it's lying. Which is perfectly fine, we see all the developers in person, the roads are developed, they didn't provide right of ways, but the argument is, no, we want this, well, then it becomes private. We just want you to stand, to keep it public, if a sidewalk in there, we can still make an assessment for, for some down there, whatever you need, but just to stand the right one. Don't ban it, right? And that's, that letter says to support, and they have it Monaco, but I, that was months ago. I read about Jekker once, so. But that is exactly, we did write that letter.
And then there was another one that was just by, that you know about this, because we're still, we know a lot of these things. Um, maybe you could explain what this one is, um, they're implementing pedestrian motor safety measures, including right turn only trial at Holton and Third. Where on Baker, it's approved lining strapping for pedestrian walkways in the Holton Corridor. Extending down Allagany Avenue, I, I mean, I'm extending down Allagany, what, what does that mean?
Thanks, you language, we paid the lines by Holden Road for new cross, we're getting heads up potential crosses in Holton and Third. Because we had a lot of, it was a full-blown intersection.
And then extending down Allagany Boulevard.
We, we cleaned up all the crush.
All the cross.
All the crosses, yes. We cleaned up all the crosswalks, changed a lot of, um, ladder to piano keys. Using the high gloss, non-leak X space painting from Holden Road. Up to Allagany River, and then Allagany Avenue, Holden Road, all the way down to College, so.
Really?
Yeah, so, so this. It's all done, I guess.
I think.
Great, did notice.
Well, I'm not pedestrian much.
But for example, like, this is your typical, you call ladder or crosswalks, they were all turned over to something like this.
Okay, cool.
Every instance, in fact, uh, we, we improved the meat here, probably the off-street areas, we improved the one. That was missing at the waterline replacements, all of them have been replaced, we cleaned up the right of, the railroad markings here. And here, there's a stopbar here, so this looks very bright, as it's taken last year, it looks just as bright now.
Good.
I wanna ask a question, if you're gonna pay crosswalks on Allagany Avenue, you can't.
Well, we don't know yet.
It's different, that's, 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 that's different. So I still have a question, it's completely different, we have to left, we have to slow talk a lot.
Well, that is.
Yeah, the question is.
She think the guy, they put the fence up.
Would you mind it?
Sorry?
Why don't we get the guy to put the fence up one night, because people watch. Sort it out later.
We, we can wrap this meeting up, we don't keep going, but.
Sure.
It had nothing to do with parking, but anything that was not around the corridor, that grand thing, I want to make sure. So if we don't have anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn. And second, sir, hold the paper, all right? Great meeting, sir, thanks everybody for coming, thanks, Jamie, thanks, Bianca, talk to you soon.
See y'all.